Tuesday, June 24th.
She can't, Robbie can hear us.
Mayor is absent tonight, Councilmember Greenstein is absent tonight, Councilmember Dunn is forthcoming, and Councilmember Vasquez is online.
You have a quorum, thank you. We'll start by reading our land acknowledgement. We, the City of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Squawley Indian Tribe and the Squawson Island Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today, who were absorbed or relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize the ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as a traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial and their role today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the histories of dispossession, forced removal, and abridged treaty rights that allowed our nation, state, and city to develop as they have today. We recommend that the community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of 1854. And with that, can I get a motion to approve our tonight's agenda?
I've moved to approve the agenda as presented.
It has been moved. Can I get a second? Second, and before we vote, we will be having a slide addition at the end of the agenda to bring forth some information from last week's three cities meeting. And with that, all in favor of approving tonight's agenda, please say aye.
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 Were there any opposed? Seeing none, that motion passes unanimously, and we have an agenda. Our first item on our agenda is public comment. We do not have anyone in chambers who has signed up for a public comment. Do we have anybody online wishing to address the council?
Nope, we don't have anybody signed up online.
Okay, and did we have any written comment?
No.
Okay, appears as though we haven't had any written comments. So the next item on our agenda are going to be under regular business items. And tonight, we have a presentation from Lot on the State of the Utility. And presenting for Lot will be their executive director, Matthew Cannelli.
Yeah, great.
Hi, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for having me again. That time of year when I head out to each of the partner jurisdictions of Lot and provide an update on how we're doing as a utility. And as we talked about even before this, Lot, you know, the L in Lot is Lacey. And really, I'd like you to think about that we are your wastewater utility. I mean, the regional focus that's been created in our community has done a lot of great things, rather than each city having their own treatment plant, right? Got together and formed Lot. So this update is to provide you information on how we're doing. Get any feedback that you want to provide me here, and any questions that you have. So I'll talk about our role as your wastewater treatment utility, how we're doing in our performance, the community connections that we continue to make through our infrastructure, as well as how we're continuing to plan for the future, making sure that as Lacey continues to grow, that Lot accommodates that increase in wastewater flow to us and ultimately can create more reclaimed water for your community as well. So as a reminder, Lacey, Olympia, Tumwater, Thurston County is what Lot stands for. We have a board of directors, and you recognize City of Lacey's member here. So Councilmember Cox has served on our board for quite some time, and we appreciate that. We meet once a month for Lot business, and our mission is to protect public health and the environment by cleaning water and restoring resources for our community. Our service area is about 140,000 people, so that includes the urban growth area. So, you know, in Lacey, the large urban growth area, if you basically think of anybody that's connected to sewer from the city, they're also Lot customers as well. And so the cities are in charge of expanding that collection pipe network, connecting up new homes, making those decisions on growth. And then, as that flow makes its way into another jurisdiction and those pipes combine, that's when Lot takes over. And that's the, that's the infrastructure that we own. So our main treatment plant, this is where we do pretty much most of our treatment is at the Bud Inlet Treatment Plant. We treat 13 million gallons per day in downtown Olympia. It started as a City of Olympia plant back in the 1950s. It's continued to expand since that time. We just did a major process upgrade at the plant, getting the highest level of treatment on Puget Sound right now. We're regulated as such, but also we continue to exceed those regulations. 13 million gallons a day is quite a bit. And the analogy I like to use is if you take a football field and build a four-story building on it and fill the entire thing with raw sewage, that's what comes down to us every day. That's a lot of broken water that will hurt you and the environment. So that's, that's our job, is to clean that up and make that safe again. We also have a variety of other infrastructure, of which some of it is here in Lacey, the Martin Way Reclaimed Water Plant, for example, as well as the Hawks Prairie Recharge Basins, all told between the pump stations, pipelines, treatment facilities. It's about a billion dollars of infrastructure that we're responsible for managing. So in Lacey, how this works, on the left side you see Lacey Wastewater. So Lacey wastewater is collected from all of the homes here in this community. Most of that comes down to the Bud Inlet Treatment Plant, that picture I just showed you. But a portion of that is taken off and sent to the Martin Way Reclaimed Water Plant over near Department of Ecology. And that plant produces reclaimed water, that's the goal. So the solid material that comes off of that actually gets put back down in a pipeline and mixed with the wastewater that goes down to the main plant. So that job of the Martin Way Reclaimed Water Plant is just to make reclaimed water, and all of that water is used. It's about one and a half million gallons per day is produced at that plant. So the infiltration basins in the Hawks Prairie area, as well as your Woodland Creek facility where you recharge groundwater at that facility. We're very highly regulated. So our permit comes from the US EPA, goes down to Department of Ecology. Then ultimately, we have this long list of things we need to do every month, every day even, on testing and reporting and all of that. So very strict discharge limits on the treatment performance we need to meet. There's about 15,000 samples that are required to meet this permit. So we test about 23,000 samples a year in our lab, but there's a lot of just monitoring that happens in a permit like this. The EPA also has requirements that we need to basically maintain our infrastructure, plan for future capacity, make sure that we're managing it appropriately. They don't want treatment facilities to just, you know, run until they fail. They want to make sure that we're keeping up with that investment. So I'll tell you about how we're doing in our performance next. And our annual report, we just came out with a few months ago, and I brought some extra copies here for you all, but it's, it's online. And it goes through a variety of different performance indicators. And you'll find, when you flip to the back page, some just fun numbers. If you think about how many billions of gallons of wastewater were treated on the back, 4.46 billion gallons of wastewater, just a lot of water coming down to us. And we met permit that entire time for the pollutants that are, that we discharge out. So that means that things like nitrogen, oxygen demand, those type of things, we met that fully all through last year. We take that information, we submit it to a third-party agency, National Association of Clean Water Agencies is an agency that gives us these peak performance awards. This is 2023, they haven't issued the 2024 yet, but we also made it there for our performance standards. There's 57 other treatment plants on Puget Sound also doing treatment. Lot has the highest level of treatment on Puget Sound. We're regulated that way since the late 80s, early 90s, because we're at the bottom of Puget Sound. But we perform at, at half the level of what our treatment plant, you know, needs to perform. So, you know, twice as well, however you want to think about that, twice the level of treatment that's required. And all of these other treatment plants on Puget Sound do varying things. But we're proud of being, doing the highest level of treatment on Puget Sound. And I mentioned that, it's something we should be proud of in our community as well. And then what you do is you can compare our rates with that high level of treatment. So I highlighted City of Lacey here, and really, the numbers aren't as important as that it's below the average rate. So highest level of treatment for below-average rates. And this is a survey we do every year on different treatment plants in our region that, that do various levels of treatment. Our major project awards that we won for our recent upgrade are here. It was fun, because we won four of them, and so we could have the board take this, take this picture for it. But this was this major plant upgrade, it's got us that next level of treatment that, that our staff was doing really well at, but didn't have all of the tools to really dial it in the way that they can now. So this last one here, the National Excellence in Engineering Grand Award, we were one of eight projects in the entire country that won for this design award at this conference. We also reuse our biogas, so that's the methane that comes off the process. We reuse that, turn it into energy and heat. And some of that heat goes to the Hands-on Children's Museum next door to us. We reuse biosalads, that's a solid material that comes off. So that's used instead of the farmers in eastern Washington using anhydrous ammonia. That's a farmer-led program. They use this for nitrogen, phosphorus, moisture. And you can see the difference in when they grow the weed out there. The one on the right is with biosalads, the one on the left was with the anhydrous ammonia. And water reuse, that's the biggest thing, and that's what you'll be hearing further about tonight, is from that, either it's that Martin Way facility that we run or our main Bud Inlet Treatment Plant, that water reuse, I mean, drop for drop, you can use that water for everything except for drinking. So it's just huge offset. The water that goes from our Martin Way plant out to your Woodland Creek site, I just looked up some numbers, it was over, over 180 million gallons last year that went to that site from our, from our main facility. So quite a bit, and used, you know, at the Tumwater Golf Course, uses 600,000 gallons per day in the summer. And that's really where the community connections come in, because when we build new infrastructure, we look at how we can create a public space with it. So that tank that we built in the upper right in the Tumwater Golf Course for providing water to the golf course, the City of Tumwater came over top and built a park over it, so it overlooks the Dischutes Valley. The Hawks Prairie Infiltration Basins on the bottom, that's in the Hawks Prairie. And now all those, you know, warehouses and commercial has grown up around it, so it's a nice oasis for people to come, and they bring their dogs, and Audubon Society comes there. And there's a lot of, a lot of work that goes into maintaining that infrastructure. It's necessary for Lot for recharge, but also, we can open it up to the public and continue to invest in that, and that's our plan for the future. When our regional services center, our admin building at our main treatment plant was built back about 14 years ago, we built a wet science center. So this is where the public can come for free, learn about where their water goes, when it goes down the drain, learn about water supplies, all these type of things. We give tours, we integrate with field trips for schools. So I pulled up some data on North Thurston School District here in this area. So all fifth-grade classes in North Thurston come through our program. And we actually have educators that are on staff that integrate with the curriculum. So this isn't just like a free museum, walk around and learn about water. We have that too, but it's actually dialed in to what the fifth-grade classes are learning. And so there's over 1,000 students last year that went through that program. And that same thing happens in Olympia and the Tumwater School Districts. When it comes to the community approach around water quality, we're taking a holistic approach to this. So this is a graph from, a graph, it's a pie chart from Department of Ecology that shows the sources of oxygen depletion in Bud Inlet. So remember, the Bud Inlet Treatment Plant, after it treats water, some of it goes to reclaimed water, but the rest gets discharged into Bud Inlet. And you can see the Bud Inlet Treatment Plant is only 3% of the oxygen depletion. I'm not showing that because we, we actually still need to do a high level of treatment and the best we can at Lot. But this shows the impacts to oxygen depletion overall and why we're involved in these other places. So Capital Lake is 62%. External sources are all those other 57 treatment plants I showed on that map. That's contributing to a nitrogen load in Puget Sound. And the local non-point, you could think of that as like runoff, septic tanks, things like that. So our approach at Lot is to actually tackle all of these pieces and work with the Department of Ecology, you know, sitting on the same side of the table with them and saying, we're focusing on all of this. So as a community, don't regulate Lot further and take 3% to 2.8% for $100 million, just to kind of throw out numbers there. It's actually, let's focus on tackling the entire piece. Lot will continue to invest and do this high level of treatment as we support all of these other pieces, which is why, if you've, you know, if you've wondered, or we've talked about this last time I was here, you know, why is Lot involved in the Capital Lake Dischutes Estuary? This is a big part of it. You know, ecology has told us very directly, if Capital Lake remains, we will regulate you further. I asked that specifically in a question to make sure I heard it right, and they, they verified that. So that's why we're involved in all those pieces. And actually, that's led to great partnerships. So the Squawson Island Tribe is with us in that approach as well. And so we sign an accord with them in December of 2024, just this last year. So they're really aligned with this approach, and we've been able to make some strides there with our relationship, as well as this environment, National Environmental Achievement Award that we won for this, this type of thinking. that we won for this type of thinking. Getting to those, that 15% of the pie is things like septic to sewer conversion rebates, that it's something that the community has asked for, but there is a connection to water quality, so we can, we can draw that connection, provide a 50% discount, because more folks that are on sewer contribute positively to water quality. You know, well-run septics are actually fine, it's just the density of them actually contributes more to the issue. Then affordable housing connection fee rebates is related to that, because providing affordable housing rebates leads to more housing, which try to get that pipeline of the encampments that do affect water quality and kind of getting, getting that development of more people into housing, ultimately, there is a water quality nexus, and it's something that the community has asked for as well. For that program, it aligns with the regional, I want to say it's 80% of AMI. Yeah, yeah. And the way that program works is that each city has a bucket of money to use, so the cities determine how to spend that, Lot just verifies that it meets the quality qualification of the program. Yep. When it comes to climate, we've been able to make some pretty dramatic differences here, because we use a lot of power. The largest power user in Thurston County, as I understand, and that's all the pumping, it's all the air that we need to provide. And so as the grid goes greener, you know, that helps get our footprint down. But also, we made some big investments into infrastructure that reduces energy. That big process upgrade that we recently did saved us about 15% platewide energy overall, which contributes to this decrease. More and more people have been moving to town since 2015, so there's more flow coming to us. So that's why I like to show the decrease per capita, 42%, but 30% overall. So I wanted to close here too with saying, okay, how's Lot going to make sure that as the city of Lacey grows, that we're set up for success to be able to continue to do that level of treatment that I just showed you? So how we do that is through this annual reporting structure, where we look at how much flow is coming to us, how much, how many, how much nutrients in nitrogen, phosphorus, and these type of things. We monitor how much flow is going in from rain events, either flowing into an open sewer or through infiltrating into the pipe and groundwater. And then we look at capacity of our infrastructure and determine, is it going to meet the needs of the future? And so we keep projecting out, and we're looking out to 2050 when we plan. We combine all that capacity review with a review of our existing infrastructure called our Asset Management Program, and we create a biennial budget. So we do a two-year budget, but we do a six-year rolling capital plan, and then we look out also to 2050. So we kind of do this in two, six, and 20-plus-year planning horizons. Let's see if I can. Might have lost it here. There we go. So then we take those, the capital budget, and we invest in the capital projects. Capital projects are 70% of our budget. Sometimes it goes up to 74% of our budget. So for example, right now, we're working on a major project called our digesters upgrade. That's the thing that basically creates the solid material, as well as the methane gas. You can get the scale of how big these tanks are, and they're, they're pretty deep as well. So there's four of those that we have at the treatment plant. So that kind of project costs $34 million to upgrade. Those were built in the 1980s and need to be upgraded. So our plan for the future is continue to invest in these type of projects, as well as the Martin Way Pump Station, which is currently in design. So I mentioned before about how Lacey wastewater starts and splits into these two places. So our Martin Way Pump Station, just across the street from the reclaimed water plant, that's getting designed right now, because it needs to be upgraded. As this community has grown, we need to upgrade the pumps and the generator and other pipes.
Does Lot have to bond for capital projects, or is it strictly fee-based?
We have in the past. It's fee-based, and then our next step is to get low-interest loans. So we've been able to successfully get low-interest loans recently, like on that digester project, $10 million from the Public Works Trust Fund, the Public Works Board, and a $10 million loan before that. That big plant upgrade, we got a loan, about $15 million from SRF State Revolving Fund. So typically, it's loans, it's fees that are charged, then loans, and then we'll bond if we need to. Yeah. To make sure that we're implementing the latest technology, we have a Future Technologies Pilot Team. This is something you'll see on big utilities, but it's something that we do at Lot, just kind of part of our day jobs, kind of carved off roles from everybody else. We meet as a team every month, and we try out new technologies. And it's okay if they fail, because you try them out and you see if they'll work. And some of them have led to, yeah, that works well, and we've implemented full scale. It's a way to test some cutting-edge things that we think could really make a big difference. And also, it's just a way for the operations staff and the maintenance staff to get used to things. They might say, hey, when we do this full scale, I'd really like this, I'd like more valves here, or this connection, or those kinds of things. And then back to water reuse, you know, water reuse is something that we need to stay at, that as a society, reusing water in this way is a huge benefit. I mentioned drop for drop, you can use it for everything except for drinking. It is limited in our region in the sense that in the winter, right, people don't need to irrigate the pipeline infrastructure to install like a dual-pipe system, where you'd have reclaimed water and potable to every home, has just proven out that that's not cost-effective, and you start to see that being slower. So the major development of reclaimed water, you know, for these bigger sources and how you're going to use it, and is going to, you know, win the day. But we're recognizing at Lot that as much as we produce in reclaimed water, as much as the cities want to use, we actually need to kind of look at maybe going to the next level. And so we're spending a lot of energy to take it all the way to reclaimed water, and we can go ahead and look at demonstrating that we can go to this next level of treatment and actually create drinking water from it. And that's not to connect in any pipes, and this is like decades in the future, but thinking in that future technologies thinking, we can, we're looking to demonstrate something called Class A plus water, which is, Class A is what reclaimed water is called now. Class A plus is this little line in the regulations that allow you to try, allow you to try it on a case-by-case basis. So we're working with Ecology right now, the Squawfish Island Tribe is part of this, City of Lacey staff has been involved, SPSC, and we're looking to just demonstrate it. Most of it, it's just going to go down the drain until we end up, you know, running it for a few months, saying everything's good, we'll catch some of the water, and we'll work with SPSC, they're going to do it in their brewing and distilling program, and we'll make beer, we'll have a party, we'll make some tea. Anything you can use water for is where we're looking to demonstrate it, because the community buy-in takes a long time, and it really starts with this. But because we've developed such a good relationship with Ecology and the tribe and all this, and developed reclaimed water for this long, now we can look to kind of go to this next level and demonstrate that it's possible. And the goal is to demonstrate that water should be judged by its quality and not its history, because once you get to that point and that mindset of thinking, it really just unlocks so much. Development of reclaimed water in its current Class A format is absolutely necessary, and that should continue, but we're looking to just kind of show the boundary of where this can go.
So reclaimed water is, is that what's coming through my sprinkler system, or is that still well water, well, potable well water?
Your house would be your city water still.
Okay. So then the reclaimed water that you're pushing out is strictly going to, for commercial purposes, irrigation purposes?
The reclaimed water that gets produced from Lot, the cities are the customer, and then the cities are the purveyor of how it should be used. So like, the city of Olympia, for example, the state campus, you know, part of it is part of their customers, so the port is using it. But to my knowledge, no private, like, house is using reclaimed water right now. It's more of the bigger sources.
Currently, we don't have the quantity to be able to move it into, like, irrigating some of the city park properties, that's one of the future plans.
Okay.
Which probably is going to come up in our next conversation, we have the reclaimed water plan. Right now, the Lacy's allotment of reclaimed water production is going to either mitigate in-stream flows in Woodland Creek by being infiltrated there at Woodland Creek Community Park, and then out to the polishing ponds out on Holman Bay at Lot Homes.
Yeah, so, yeah, the city of Lacey is using all of the, all of the reclaimed water that Lot can generate from the facility we have.
And then once that reclaimed water, or once we get past the A plus, what, is that, is that, like, is there some kind of infrastructure requirement that we have to?
So the benefit of A plus, and this is, this is decades in the future, this is, but if you just think about water being water, and the quality is what drives the thing, now you actually don't need a two-pipe system. Right, you don't need to separate your sources when you have one. Cities across the country are doing this in different ways. It's been driven in California, Arizona, Florida, Texas, where they're really, they're drought-stricken, they're out of water, they have to do this. The idea here is, let's get way out ahead of it, we know climate change is here, we know all these drivers are coming our direction, let's just get way out ahead of it and not rush, and just get used to the concept, so when we have to do it, we can do it. But cities do it in different ways. Once you produce it to that level, sometimes you just inject it back into the aquifer, into the ground. Sometimes it's injected, it's mixed and blended in a tank with other drinking water. That is yet to be determined, and that's nowhere on the horizon at all, this is just a demonstration of it.
I can add one positive, this, doing this work now in anticipation, climate change is one reason, but also water rights in the state of Washington is very hard to get by at some point as growth, and you have more connections, you get caught up in your water rights cap, and so this could be a potential solution to that in 20, 30 years.
So for years, and I don't want to be hogging all the questions, but I always wonder about desalinators, and why are they used more in the United States than, you know, some of the other countries are already using them? And I still don't understand.
It's cost.
It's a cost?
It's cost, and it's also the brine that you create by concentrating the salt. You have to get rid of the salt somewhere. So desalination, from the scale of things, desalination is probably the most expensive to then comes to something like this, like a Class A plus. Those are still very costly, because it takes a lot of energy to push that water through a membrane, a reverse osmosis membrane.
Oh, okay.
That's the major cost, but the disadvantage to desalination is you've got this concentrated salt that ends up getting injected back out into the waterways, the saltwater body, which can create its own issue.
You know, it's concentrated it.
Yeah, I mean, places that have gone to that have just, there's no other, they need water, so they're willing to do that. The more that this kind of concept comes up, you know, the more that communities can weigh the two and say, well, maybe we do as much conservation as we can, then we do as much reclaimed water as we can, and then we do a little bit of decal here, and maybe a Class A plus kind of thing, you know? It's all in the picture of the water supplies. And then just the last couple of slides here, so 2050, that's how we look at. So we don't have a plan for building new treatment plants. That was something, you know, Lot had in his portfolio in the early 2000s, that was the plan, is to build more of those Martin Way reclaimed water plants. But we found over time, that's pretty intensive to run these remote facilities, and we can get a high level of treatment at our main facility, and so from a cost perspective primarily, but also just, you know, from a footprint and everything that goes with it. So we'll focus on our main treatment plant in the future. If we regionally collaborate on this water quantity, water quality, resilience planning, we think that regional collaboration plus the high level of treatment is really going to get us there for the future, and the most cost-effective way to run the utility. Which leads to why we're selling off some properties, so why the Mullen Road property was sold to the City of Lacey was that we don't need it anymore, because that was going to be a treatment plant at some point. And our approach at Lot was to offer these properties in the jurisdiction Lot is, to see if the city wanted it first, and you all did, and so we were able to work that out and use that for affordable housing, so that's a win-win for everybody. And then our properties, like, for example, we call it our Deschutes Valley property, that's a property in the brewery district, so we're working with the City of Tumwater to do the same thing. So they're, they're looking to purchase property from us there that we no longer need for a treatment plant there. Can't forget about all the staff that make it happen, so 24 hours a day, seven days a week, you're flushing your toilet, you're not worried about it, our folks are taking care of it, and do all the dirty jobs, and then plus, right, we do the samples, we do the maintenance, we do the construction, all that, it's about 91 people that make it happen. We have some called the Lot Way that we really believe in, and our turnover rate is really low. I mean, today it's 0%, but it's 2%. This is voluntary turnover rate, people seeking similar jobs elsewhere. Have a lot of fun, very dedicated workforce, very technical workforce as well. So how we meet future needs, a dedicated Lot mission, finding that water quality nexus, innovation, being adaptable, being flexible, being willing to modify and change, constant planning, and ultimately, that community support, which, and I just want to take this opportunity to thank, you know, Rick and I meet frequently, Lacey staff has been wonderful to work with, there's just a lot of collaboration, and really, that's how we're going to meet that 2050 goal, is working together on all these issues. And I'm happy to report, I mean, literally no issues on that collaboration, and thankful to staff for that. That's all I have.
Thank you for the Mullen Road property.
Yeah.
Much needed by us, and then solid waste from Lot. What is, what happens there?
So the solid waste that we produce, other than just being a, almost like a business where you'd have garbage from your staff, we, when material flows down, we screen it off, like, the big stuff that comes down in the wastewater goes into dumpsters, we have a big roll-off dumpster, that just goes to a landfill. So that's the only solid waste that we produce. The biosalads that we produce, part of the process, goes to that beneficial reuse program.
Did I ask all the questions? You guys, well, I mean, you're on.
I could chime in.
Yeah, please, Councilmember Vasquez.
Matt, I had an opportunity to tour the Chambers Lake wastewater treatment facility up in Pierce County, and I just wanted to share that I was kind of bragging about Lot's practices related to using the methane off-gas for, like, reusable power effort.
Okay.
They have a very big facility up there, it serves all of Pierce County, I think it's tremendous, but when I was talking about how Lot uses, like, you know, is reducing its own energy footprint by reusing the gas that comes out of the process, you know, they're not doing that up there yet. So they're reusing the solids, and they actually make the solid waste available to, like, members of the community, it becomes like fertilizer, I think they call it agro-grow or something like that. But I just wanted to share that they have a very large, impressive facility up there, but they're not doing some of the cool things that you and Lot are doing for us down in Thurston County, so thank you for always being so innovative.
Oh, yeah, thank you for sharing that with them as well, thank you.
Robin, it's called Tagrow.
Tagrow? I thought they called it something else in Tacoma, but maybe that's it.
Does anybody else have anything further?
Quick question, Liz. Matt, going back to your comment about the lake versus estuary issue, and you mentioned that if it's, if that stays in the lake, lake environment, that then the regulations would be increased. What's the correlation there? Is it, does the estuary creating more of a mixture in butt inlet and creating a?
Yes, it's the, it's the oxygen depletion created by the algae growing in the lake. So the dam, you dam up the lake, you grow the algae, and then now the algae goes in the saltwater environment, dies off, natural processes basically consume that oxygen, you know, to break down the algae, there's not enough left for the fish. So, yeah, so it's that whole idea of, and so the goal of Ecology is water quality, oxygen in there, in butt inlet, so that's.
So that makes your bar a little bit higher to reach, if you have that, also that other influence in the water quality and the oxygen.
Right, there's all these sources contributing to butt inlet water quality, and they're saying that algae is just a major contributor to that.
So that's one of the reasons why that Capital Lake, Capital Lake estuary issue is more of a regional issue than a localized issue, because of these other effects that has on some of our partner organizations.
Well, unless anybody has anything further, thank you so much for your presentation and being here tonight, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for having me. Yeah. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Matt.
Okay. So, next on our agenda is our reclaimed water plan. And it looks like we have Matt and, I don't want to, I don't want to screw up your name.
And then Goggins will be up here.
Oh, okay. Goggan and principal planning engineer and civil engineer. And we have from Corallo engineers.
Good evening, councilmembers. Sorry. Good evening, councilmembers. My name is Goggan Brar. I'm one of the utility engineers in Public Works Water Resources Department. And today, joining with me is Terry O'Neal, who's our senior utility engineer, AKA my boss. And we also have Matt Huang with Corallo Engineers, who are our consultants, consultants for, who helped us in draft this reclaim, city's first ever reclaimed water plan. So, the purpose for this reclaimed water plan was to evaluate how are we using our current, current reclaimed water that, like Matt mentioned, modern reclaimed water plant is producing? And what's our and Lot's current infrastructure within the city limits? And what are the future uses? How can we, you know, you have more uses of our reclaimed water in the future? So, that's what this plan details. And just as a back note, this plan has been gone through review from various different agencies, our neighboring jurisdictions, including Lot, and, and also Planning Commission, sorry. And we've incorporated their comments and revised the plan accordingly. Another note is that no formal action is needed from the council at this time. This plan will be attached to the wastewater comprehensive plan, which is currently ongoing. And it'll be adopted in a couple of years with that plan. So, with that, let's jump into the presentation. Am I pressing it right?
So, when you say plan, you're referring to the 1138 page?
Yes, exactly.
Document.
I'm pretty sure you read all of it, right? So, so the agenda for our presentation is that we're going to talk about, you know, what is the reclaimed water, what kind of reclaimed water we get from Lot? Our existing facilities, what's our current use? And briefly touch upon any water rights mitigation requirements and what's the future? And any recommendations for the reclaimed water use? And what's our 2040 projection? And then, we'll conclude the presentation. So, what is reclaimed water? So, reclaimed water is treated wastewater. And the treatment process includes our regular wastewater treatment process, which is biological oxidation and then disinfection. But with reclaimed water, we also add a component, which is the advanced treatment. And per the ecology reclaimed water rule, that includes membrane filtration, like Matt mentioned. Lot's Martin Way reclaimed water plant produces Class A reclaimed water, which is high-quality water. It meets all the stringent requirements. And it features, the treatment plant at the Martin Way reclaimed water plant features membrane bioreactor technology, which combines biological treatment and microfiltration. And then, we follow, follow it up with disinfection. So, what's Class A reclaimed water typically is used for? You guys already know this, right? So, I'm basically reading myself. So, it's, we're replenishing, replenishing our groundwater supplies. It's being used for irrigation in our neighboring jurisdictions. We can also use it for flushing toilets. But it's not intended for drinking, bathing, or swimming. But like Matt mentioned, Class A plus water, if we treat it even more at a higher treatment level, we can potentially use Class A plus for all these purposes.
For human touch.
So, the existing, let's talk about the existing reclaimed water facilities. So, you guys already know Martin Way reclaimed water plant, right next to Department of Ecology, owned by Lot. And it allotts reclaimed water to cities of Lacey and Olympia. Then we have the Hawksbury reclaimed water ponds, owned by Lot. And it receives, the infiltration rate at this, at these ponds is about 2 million gallons. And then, we have, to the south, we have the Woodland Creek Groundwater Retard Facility, owned by Lacey and Olympia. And we, the infiltration rate at these, at this facility is about 0.3 to 0.9 MGD and it's season-dependent. We have to monitor the groundwater level, levels below the infiltration galleries at this facility.
MGD?
MGD, yeah. Million gallons per day, million gallons per day, sorry. So, this is, these are some cool pictures of, you know, before and after. You can see the infiltration galleries in yellow, the purple reclaimed water line distributing, that's how it distributes reclaimed water to these infiltration galleries. And that's how we infiltrate the reclaimed water that we get from the Martin Way plant. And this is the after-construction picture. You can see it's a grassy field. And this is with the Hawksbury reclaimed water ponds. Look like these have, they have the five wetland ponds where the reclaimed water comes in, circulates through these five wetland ponds. And then, all the reclaimed water, after more treatment in these wetland plants, gets infiltrated into these shallow basins, those dry shallow basins.
For infiltration.
Yeah. And so, Lot also owns some transmission mains. As you can see, in red, solid red, that's, and dotted red. So, the solid red is an active transmission main. It gets the wastewater from the Martin Way pump station to the west of the Martin Way reclaimed water plant. And then, it gets treated, becomes reclaimed water. And from there, it's, gets distributed to the Hawksbury ponds and the Woodland Creek facility. So, the solid red line is owned by Lot. And there's a solid dotted line to the south in Mullen that was owned by Lot. And as you, councilmembers are aware, that we recently purchased, bought the property, which is at the northwest end of the transmission main. And we're going to use that for affordable housing. But the city is all, already in process of buying this main as well. And we're going to use that for our sewer step main to increase our capacity for future. So, we're already in the process of that.
There's something I've been wondering for a couple of years. So, the infiltration pond, right? How much water can it infiltrate, can, can be, can be pushed through that dirt before it? You know, because eventually, it's, you know what I mean? Like, if you put enough through it, eventually, it's going to get caught, it's going to catch up, right? Like, to, I mean, like.
Oh, it's going to get saturated and we can't.
Saturation point.
So, I'm not familiar with the saturation point, but the, Terry was involved in the project for the Woodland Creek facility. And, correct me if I'm wrong, Terry, but the condition was, we have to make sure that immediately beneath these infiltration galleries, we have to make sure there's a water zone, which is unsaturated zone. We have to make sure this, there's a buffer zone. And we, the soils in that facility, either they were already existing, they were pretty well-drained soils, or they were constructed in such a way that we create that water zone. The, the issue here, and I was going to talk about this in the, in the follow-up slides, was that we have to make sure we don't infiltrate more than 0.9 MGD of reclaimed water every day, million gallons per day. And I'm going to talk about in the future slides, why we have, it's, it's part of the mitigation. It's part of our coordination with ecology of when they approved the whole mitigation via the Woodland Creek facility. So, we'll, I'll, I'll talk more about that.
Okay.
In the upcoming slides. So, let's talk about the Lacey-owned transmission mains. So, the solid pink line, the solid blue line, and the solid, the dotted pink line. All of these transmission mains are owned by Lacey. So, the solid pink line, actually, we get, that's how we get the reclaimed water from the Martin Way reclaimed water plant to our Woodland Creek facility. The dotted pink line is, we install that line for future irrigation customers. We thought, once we have enough reclaimed water, we can actually use this to serve future irrigation customers. The solid blue line was put in with the gateway development. And the intent behind was to, since it's already connected to the Martin Way reclaimed water, the red line, it'll be easier to serve these customers, at least the irrigation, using these solid blue lines. But then, we found out, we don't have enough reclaimed water because all of our reclaimed water is going for water as mitigation. So, but we still wanted to serve those customers, at least their irrigation needs. So, we fill the, the, that reclaimed water line gateway development with portable water. But in the future, if there's enough reclaimed water, we can, you know, use those lines for reclaimed water.
So, it looks like those, those lines serve from Cabela's up through the apartment complexes and over to Department of Transportation?
Yeah.
Almost?
Yeah. So, what's our current reclaimed water use? So, raw water, the raw wastewater is, you know, some of it, most of it goes to the butt inlet treatment plant. Some of it is diverted to the Martin Way reclaimed water plant where it gets treated. And then, Lacey, per our inter-local agreements, has been allotted 0.68 MGD of reclaimed water. And out of those 0.68 MGD, 0.45 to 0.65 MGD is being infiltrated at the Woodland Creek facility per the water rights mitigation. And this is part of our water rights permits that were issued back in 2011, 2012, where part of the conditions of those permits were to, where the city should infiltrate reclaimed water in order to make up for all the water that we're taking out. And whatever reclaimed water we can infiltrate in the Woodland Creek facility, the rest of it gets disposed off into, into the Hawksbury ponds, whatever we can infiltrate.
Can we, we have a minute for a quick question for councilmember Vasquez? Go ahead, councilmember.
Do we use reclaimed water for the rack? If not, why not? Sorry if I missed that, but I'm just curious. We have, no, we irrigate the rack.
Currently, we don't have enough reclaimed water to use for irrigation purposes, councilmember. We're using all of our reclaimed water for water rights mitigation purposes by infiltrating at the Woodland Creek facility.
But as more reclaimed water is produced and more conversions, you know, from septic to sewer, as well as population growth, you get more allotment. That is the plan long-term and start to be able to use that for uses like irrigation at our park facilities.
So, so that'll be the beginning of our, our reclaimed irrigation is at parks?
Yes.
So, as we gain more supply, our mitigation will change, right? Is that what you're saying?
Potentially. But as we gain more supply, we also have to incorporate, we have to see the growth, population growth, which comes with increased demand, which again, per ecology's permit, we have to do more mitigation. So, so we have to also see that. And if we have enough, after doing the mitigations, then potentially, yes, we can have more water for irrigation purposes.
A slow growth.
So, this, this slide shows how much reclaimed water we need as our growth continues. So, you know, as we know, our population increases at a certain rate. With that comes with more demand. And with that, per the permits, comes more reclaimed water that we need to infiltrate for mitigation purposes.
To have more people.
So, what's the foreseeable future? Currently, there's no capital improvement, improvement program. We don't have to include anything for reclaimed water in our financial plan, so.
So, it sounds like, in order for us to, to get to where Mike was talking about, we would need to be all the way built out before we would see an excess, potentially?
So, what, what needs to happen is the current size of the Martin Way treatment plant, it does not have enough capacity for water rights mitigation plus irrigation. That plant would need to be expanded.
Okay.
And so, they need to have enough wastewater coming from us to actually expand the plant at that time. And, and they're not just going to, you know, get a drop more and then they expand it. They actually have to have, you know, enough supply that, to put in a whole new bank, they need about, you know, a large number, let's go with a large number of more flow. Yeah, that's sustainable because they have to use, with the membrane treatment plants, they have to have continuous flow. And it's not like they can turn it off and then back on. And so, you'd have to have enough that if they add a third train, that they have continuous flow through all three trains.
And that's our, like, that's, that's why, even in the plan, we're encouraging Lot to expand the production of the Martin Way reclaimed water plant. Because with, with expansion comes more stable reclaimed water supply. So, for foreseeable future, what we see is most of our reclaimed water would be used for water rights mitigation purposes.
And Matt, in the previous presentation, was saying they're going to concentrate on the facility in downtown Olympia, right? So, it's a ways off.
Yeah, because it's more cost-effective for them to operate, maintain their, their plant there, so, yeah.
So, that's why we're encouraging them.
Approving budgets with construction, and it's staggering, the amount that it would cost to build new treatment facilities. I mean, it's, it's huge, just, just with the renovations that they've been doing. You're talking, you know, millions and millions and millions of dollars. So, it's not that they don't want to, it's like.
But there's probably a formula of how many units are, go up versus how much flow they're getting and then how much, how soon they're going to have to.
Yeah. I mean, they've been studying it for a long time and doing projections and trying to figure out the best path forward and.
And these are city and county units that we're talking about, yeah? For additional flow.
Yeah, yeah. Because it's incorporated growth area, it's all, it's our sewer service area goes in our incorporated growth area as well, so. And then, you also add the septic conversion, so those are already our customers. And so, those would be, wouldn't add more water demand and water rights mitigation necessarily. So, there's, it's a combination of, of conversion and new development.
Does it go all the way out through the UGA or just partially?
Our service area for service. Pretty much covers our entire UGA.
Yeah, so we, our wastewater service area includes everything within the UGA for them, yeah. No, not, not everybody inside the UGA or the city is actually served. There's still a large number of homes that are on septic system, a very high percentage, so.
Yes. I remember the maps with the red dots.
And this, this all stops where the tribe's land begins? In terms of our, our eastern border?
Well, it stops at the Disquali Bluff, yes. But when you talk about trimland, like the Queen of the Village, that would all be served by city sewer.
Yeah, we figured that. I was just wondering, you know, where does this? Because the the tribe land starts, but just beyond, gosh, go out Pacific and start heading down towards towards the.
Yeah, at the bottom of the Disquali Valley.
Yeah. And so that is that where we we stop?
Well, our sewer sewer service boundary replicates our urban growth area. Our urban growth area runs along the top of the Disquali Bluff, so.
Got it.
On the east side.
So, yeah, so that's what we see in our foreseeable future. All of our reclaimed water is going to be mostly used for water rights mitigation. So potential future reclaimed water use, if we have enough reclaimed water after doing all the mitigation, then we can serve our customers for irrigation needs. And why that is important is because we can offset one point four to two point five M G D of potable water if we have enough reclaimed water and supply all of our irrigation customers. And that's that's a big number for us as a charity.
But most of us, most of our lines are single line, right? We're not, we don't have potable water line and a reclamation water line, at least not for for residential purposes or single family or multifamily, it's just commercial. Is that?
We have transmission mains, which the previous slide showed where the locations are, and they just go past. There's no services off of those mains at the moment, not for commercial or housing.
Okay, so at that point, we would look at building lines off those mains to?
Yeah, you could put service lines off of those, yes.
And that if we if we if we have enough reclaimed water to serve irrigation, and that comes to the next point, which we need to do some storage and pumping improvements, and we need to do some analysis of, okay, how much it's going to cost to put in more infrastructure. So but that's in the future.
Got it.
We don't have to think about it right now because we don't have enough reclaimed And so what's our 2040 projections? We project that the city of Lacy will be allotted one point four six M G D. Out of that, we could get point nine to one point three M G D for our water rights mitigation based upon the population increase and the demand increase. And then we can figure out if we have enough reclaimed water and how can we serve that, you know, leftover portion of the reclaimed water.
When you're when you're measuring population for for us and for these numbers, are you using city boundaries or are you using U G As while, are you combining them?
Yeah, I I think we're combining the city and U G A. Because BURC is, I think, doing our population projections right now. We hired BURC just for Lacy, overall city and U G A.
Okay.
And we're asking them to give us the population numbers for each sewer basin, which goes into our U G A as well.
Which is inclusive of all?
Yeah.
Okay.
So conclusion, like I said, there's no capital improvement program as of right now. We encourage a lot to expand the Martin Way reclaimed water plant capacity. If we have enough, you know, if we have excess reclaimed water after our water rights mitigation, then we'll consider expanding the infrastructure and finding out potential irrigation customers in what area makes sense to have those, you know, expanded infrastructure for reclaimed water. And then we'll also update our reclaimed water plan. So thank you.
Well, thank you for adding so many pages to our comprehensive plan that I'm going to have to read. And if there's, is there any questions from from Councilmember Vasquez online? No? Okay.
I was trying to find, wasn't Matt talking about expanding, you know, future infrastructure beyond the downtown Olympia plant? I was just trying to find it in his presentation. I thought he was talking about.
They're going away from the model of having these satellite reclaimed water treatment centers, but they're still going to look at expanding the Martin Way Treatment Facility. And existing facilities are already on the system.
Right, that was it, okay.
And I think that's what he was saying is the reason why they sold, because they're not going to be using those to build treatment facility plants.
And that's critical for us, right, for future, especially if we're going to even consider doing irrigation with, you know, treated wastewater.
Right. But that will be lots project, not Lacy paying for that.
Well, thank you guys for your presentation. It's great to have you here.
Thank you, Terry.
Okay, is is that the end of?
Thanks, Amy.
Okay, so our next agenda item tonight is going to be our equity map introduction. And tonight, we have our Assistant City Manager Shannon Kelly Fong.
Well, good evening, Deputy Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm very excited to talk to you about our equity map that we've been working on for a good six or nine months at this point in time, and we're happy to share it with you. And I am going to turn on my microphone so that everybody can hear me. So just once again, good evening, everybody. So I will actually share the screen over here, so I'm driving a little bit differently. So be patient here, we're going to try this out from this perspective. All right, well, I think maybe just to kind of ground set this, I want to turn to our diversity, equity, inclusion, and belonging strategic plan that the council adopted back in September of 2024. One of the policies, goal areas, I should say, was programs, policies, and services. And under there, it was strategy was to integrate and reflect equity values in all policy and planning documents, for example, budget, comprehensive plan, et cetera. And one of the benchmarks that was established was to take a look at creating first an equity framework tool, and then also second that I've highlighted here, creating an equity map that supports the equity framework tool in other city projects. And so as we started thinking about this, we were thinking, you know, we actually need the equity map first so that you can actually support the equity framework tool forthcoming. So we actually started working on developing the equity map, which we're here tonight to take a look at. So this was one of the benchmarks that was established in that. In the Commission on Equity's 2025 work plan, this was further noted as a project that the Commission on Equity would work on, both in 2024 and now in 2025. And so you can see here, under Q1, to finalize the equity map. And so the Commission on Equity did get to review it a number of times, and I've got all of the meetings here that this was discussed with the Commission on Equity, with the latest being in February. And then March of this year, they got to preview all of the materials that got put together and give some feedback on where the equity map was.
Okay.
The equity map, as it was being developed, was based on a internal team with representation from our Community and Economic Development Department, our Information Systems Department, including our G I S analyst. We had representation, myself, from the City Manager's Office, and also from our Equity Inclusion Program Manager. And then we did some stakeholder in group with a broader group of city employees, and then also our executive team, and got some additional feedback. And we're still working on some little things, but at this point, we think we've got kind of the big concept in motion. So just for a little bit of background on equity tools, well, what are they? They are used for decision making models that integrate equitable considerations into new proposals, policies, processes, procedures, and practices. When we started looking and researching, we found that they often included consideration of impacts of various groups and social identities and categorizations. There's always a emphasis on data and pulling in information to help make more informed decisions, and then also having community input and involvement. And so these are all important parts of these tools, and certainly things that we want to keep looking at as we're thinking about a framework. One of the tools within that subset are equity maps. And I will say that this is one of many data driven equity tools. This isn't the only one, and certainly you'll hear me say that a couple of times tonight. I've got a quote here from the city of Tacoma and how they're using it, and I won't read the whole thing, but just briefly, they stated, "The equity index is a data driven tool you see where your projects, policy, programs, or services can have the largest impact on addressing inequity, and where investments can provide the biggest improvements and factors that impact life outcomes." And so when we started researching this, we looked locally, and we found that there were several jurisdictions here in Washington that used equity maps or something similar, livability maps. And so just to give a couple of examples in Washington, and then we'll move beyond that, we found that the city of Tacoma had one, and they've had one for several years. Pierce County, Washington also has one. The Port of Seattle has one, and Lakewood has one. And moving beyond just Washington, we also took a look at some other equity maps. So we have San Antonio, Texas, Portland, Oregon, Alexandria, Virginia, and Tucson, Arizona. And you can see when you're just kind of briefly going through this, there's a couple of elements that a lot of these maps tend to have, and that is, you know, having a map with kind of categories filled with color so that you can easily convey information on, you know, certain topics that you're interested in looking into in more detail. Taking a look at all of these, what we did find was that categories and indicators across these maps varied. So you won't find two equity maps that are exactly alike. And a lot of that has to do with either preference or design or data availability. So, you know, we do a really good job here at the city of taking a look at our streets and how well our streets are performing with pavement management indexes. Not all jurisdictions do that, and so they may not have as readily available of data so that you could take a look at, you know, are your, how how well are your streets performing, and how can you compare them to other jurisdictions? And so that's just one example of, you know, we have the data, but other places may not. So just as a comparison, when we were working through this with the Commission on Equity, we took a look at all of the index components, so the indicators from Pierce County and then the Tacoma, the Tacoma indicators as well, and just kind of looked at, well, what kind of similarities did they have, what kind of differences did they have? And you can see, just taking a look at this, there's a lot of overlap, but there were also, you know, some differences, like, I'll use the example with Pierce County, you've got library access, just as one example. So we use this, and we also started working with a group called Community Attributes Incorporated. And they actually have done a lot of maps for some of the other jurisdictions in Washington that we mentioned. And so you'll notice when we start to take a look at our equity map that there is some similarities with those. And as part of what they created for us, they created the map, but they also created a user guide so that individuals who may use this, and this will be public facing, it'll also be available for our internal staff, can do a deep dive and take a look at how to use it, what's its purpose, where it gets its data, what are some of the limitations, and then where also to contact somebody if there's questions or concerns about what's found in the equity map. The map itself, I think it's it's good to highlight that anytime you're looking at a map, there are limitations. The methodology that created this map was derived from the Kirwan Institute on Race and Social Justice out of the Ohio State University. I feel compelled to have to say that. And so you can learn more information about the Kirwan Institute in the user guide, as well as by clicking the link on this presentation and kind of understand, you know, what the process was that they went into in informing, you know, some equity map attributes. And like I mentioned, we partnered with C A I Attributes to help create this. Its limitations, I think, you know, just recognizing that data is not comprehensive or perfect. I think, you know, even when we're thinking about census data, oftentimes it is the best information that we can get. But one of the things the Commission on Equity flagged was that, you know, even individuals filling out the census may not provide, you know, all of the information there, or some of them may feel like they can't answer some of the questions. And so I think we should also always consider that, you know, the data isn't perfect, but we're trying to take a look at what we have and present it in a usable fashion. I think it's also important to understand that data is just one part of the story and that you have to understand community differences and perspectives as part of that, so you can't just look quantitative. You also need to consider qualitative and reaching out to community groups to really get a full, robust picture of what's going on. And kind of connected to that, numbers alone are not, you know, strong enough to shape effective policies. You've got to take a deeper dive beyond just the numbers. The final thing I'll note is that sometimes the data presented in this map may differ from those of previous studies, and that's based on data availability, maybe new methodologies. And so one of the things that was flagged, for example, was tree canopy and the the data set that was used for this versus the data set that was used for our last tree canopy study. And so we just want to recognize that there are some differences just based on time of the data and methodology.
And that's stuff that we share with them so that they can help us produce this?
Yep, we we help provide some information. They also got some information from the census and other open source data as well. And so on that note, what we had decided for our indices are shown here on this table. We broke it down into five areas. You see accessibility, livability, education, economy, and environment. And these are all of what's listed under here are the data sets that were used to help create the equity calculation or the calculation within each of these indices. So you'll see, for example, when we pull up the map, accessibility, you can take a look at it and get a rating just based on accessibility. But when you take all five of these categories together, that's when you get your overall equity score. There are other data elements used, but they're for reference only. So for example, demographic data, a lot of that is only for reference, it's not specific for creating an equity score.
Do we have time for a quick question?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Vasquez.
I don't know if it's a question or an observation, but the data categories that we're using for our equity map seem to have a lot of overlap with various definitions that exist for social determinants of health. Like, these are also data that you can look at that contribute to community health, having access to educational attainment, you know, high quality environment, strong economy, access to travel and clean spaces. So I just wanted to note, and I don't know if we've taken a look at that, if there's health data incorporated into this anywhere, self rated health, health uninsured rate. Okay, it's on the list.
Yep, absolutely. Yeah, and that's a really excellent point. And, you know, one of the data sources that we used a lot was the Washington State Health Disparities Map, and that's where we got some of this information. And they do a great job, too, of having an overall equity score for all of Washington State, and so it's a really great resource to take a look at. So on the the topic of of rating itself, just to kind of unpack this before we show the the map itself, so it does have an equity index, and you will see that the rating goes from very high, high, moderate, low, to very low. And you can see that in the various shades of dark red to very light red. And the ratings, number one I will highlight are relative comparisons to how specific census tracts in Lacy or the Lacy Urban Growth Area compare to all of the census tracts in Thurston County. So it's essentially a comparison of one group compared to all of the census blocks within the county itself.
Okay, so we're just we're using federal census tracts to?
Yep, yep, absolutely. And we can actually, we'll show the tool that you can use to use, kind of slice through different census tracts as well. But I think the the important part is that we're not comparing against all of Washington State, we're not comparing against all of the country, we're just taking a look here at a local level of us compared to the rest of Thurston County. And so you can see in the histogram, which is the graph here on the right hand side, what the little green dot over here on the the left side that says selected area, that is representing, in this particular case, all of Lacy. So I have all of Lacy selected. And then you can see in the dot to the right of that, which is the lighter blue one, that's Thurston, a comparison for Thurston County. So when we're talking about park access, it's taking a look at the overall, you know, city of Lacy, how many folks have access to parks within a certain percentage comparative to Thurston County? So you can see the breakdown into these five areas. So in all of Lacy, just as an example, and this, I'll show you this when we actually get in real time, in this particular one, the selected area has about sixty percent has, you know, park access compared to Thurston County, which is about fifty six percent, but you can get that breakdown. So on the rating itself, very high, and this is really important, so that dark red represents locations with collectively better outcomes due to the presence of a greater combination of access to opportunities. So a lot of the things that Councilmember Vasquez was just mentioning, so, you know, high performing schools, access to transportation, like inner city transit, accessible neighborhoods, so with sidewalks, high quality employment, life expectancy, et cetera. And then on the other end of the spectrum, you have very low, which represents locations with collectively worse outcomes, so they don't have as high of scores in those types of areas collectively. The other thing we did want to focus on with this map is we wanted to include the U G A. And so what you'll see when we take a look at the map is the dark solid line. And so what you'll see when we take a look at the map is the dark solid lines, those are the city of Lacey boundaries, and then the lighter blue dotted lines are the Lacey Urban Growth Area boundaries. And then finally, we're talking about a lot of information today, and there's a lot of information in the user guide, but we are also working to set up a website on our city website that just explains all of the things I'm going over tonight of like how to use it, what are some of the limitations, and what people could look for. So this is just an example of what we're working on and developing. So we're going to run through the equity map now, and I think, you know, the purpose of tonight is just to kind of explore it. We're going to continue to fine-tune it, and then hopefully here in the summer, we are going to be posting it to the website for community and internal use. So I'll stop that share, and I'll reshare, and we'll give you the overview of the equity map. All right. So we're taking a look at the landing page of the equity map, and I do want to point out a couple of really important features here. So on the right-hand side, you can see there is a dashboard over here, and if we can just, perfect, thank you. You can select whether or not you want to see just the city of Lacey, whether you want to see the Lacey UGA, or whether you want to see the city of Lacey and the Lacey UGA. And by selecting those areas, it'll update the dataset, and you can see information really quickly pulled and compiled right here on the right-hand side of this dashboard. So for example, right now on the home landing page, we're looking at just demographics. And so this is now giving me all of the information for the city of Lacey and the UGA, and you can toggle between all of these goal areas. So if you wanted to move over to accessibility, you could take a look at it, and you could see, you know, for this area, what is the transit access, what is the home internet access, and you could take a deeper dive into all of these for all of those areas. I do want to just highlight again, the demographic information is there for information only. It's not used for any calculations of the equity index itself. And you can go through each of these areas and learn a little bit more information on this dashboard. So if we were, for example, just to go to livability, and we're looking again at the city of Lacey and the Lacey UGA, we can get some information. Let's say, for example, on the walkability index score, you can select any of these items, and you can click on this information to get more information about what the dataset is, what it means, and how it's being used, and also to find those comparisons that we were talking about with the city of Lacey, and in this case, the urban growth area compared to Thurston County. So you can get more information on all of those areas. On the map itself, you can see we have a very colorful map using the equity index. Again, you know, very high being that there's greater equity, very low meaning there's more disparity in equity. And so you can see each of these areas. You can also zoom in, so you can get more information and find where you're at. You can select census blocks and learn more information on a particular item. But you can also, in addition to navigating it this way, you can get more finessed information by using the left-hand side over here. There's a lot of tools that community members could use to get more nuanced information. So as an example, in addition to selecting certain census blocks, you can actually customize the area you want to look at. So if I wanted to pull a report that maybe looked at this area and this area, it'll do its best to calculate the information for that particular area and update all of the information in all of the categories. So for example, this area that I've just selected, there's roughly 5,700 folks living there, and you can see that there's about 20% have individuals with disabilities. So you can get more information than just what's on the census track by using this cutting tool to really fine-tune what you're looking for. The other thing you can do is you can turn on certain layers and get more information on those layers that are all used in the formula to create the equity score. So just as an example, let me just refresh this really quickly. As an example, over here on this left-hand side, just right under the custom areas, you can go to map options, and you can turn on a number of different indices. So right now we have the equity index, but perhaps you're doing a project that you really only want to know about accessibility. And so you could turn on the indices that are only used for accessibility, and you can see where there's a very high score for accessibility, and where there are very low scores for accessibility. And you can do that for all of the categories. So for example, economic index. You can also turn off all of those broad ones and go get more detailed information on each of the indices that make up the index. So for example, we talked about average road quality. If we wanted to look specifically at that, we could load that dataset, and it would tell us where the scores are based on the data that goes into it. And you can see in there are certain areas where no data is available, and that's because, you know, in certain tracts, they spread between the city and maybe another jurisdiction, and then also the, so the county or, you know, Olympia. And so there's not necessarily data there that's consistent across the board. For food access, just as another example, under accessibility, you can get more information and kind of find out, you know, where there could be potential healthy food deserts in the community. So there's a number of things that you can explore for each of these areas. You can also download the information. So if you were really curious about educational attainment, you could select that dataset, and then you could select download, and it will select it, it will download it for what you have selected, or it'll download it for the entire map. So if we had just one or two census tracts selected, we could get that information pinpointed to that area.
Now, is that Excel?
It does, yep. It comes out as an Excel spreadsheet, and then you could use that information or data. You can also print it, too. So if you didn't want just Excel data, you could easily create a map by hitting the print button over here for use as well. And so it's going to create a more digestible print version of this that talks about the selected area and the, whatever indices you have focused on.
Councilmember Vasquez.
Shannon, this is real cool. It's a very, it has a lot of functionality. Really clear that there's a lot of different types of data that you pull out of this, based on what you're interested in, and the answer, like, the question you're trying to get it to. Do any other cities in Thurston County have any of this yet? Because the only thing I can think of that would make this cooler is if we could get regional data as well as like specific.
Yeah, I know the city of Olympia, and I think it's their, their stormwater department may have an internal equity map that they are using, but specifically designed for that purpose. But that is definitely something that, you know, when we talk about with our regional jurisdictions, you know, something we will have some future discussions on of, you know, what could be the use beyond just the city of Lacey.
Yeah, because like the Thurston Regional Planning Council, for instance, has the profile, which, you know, they are already compiling a ton of data on, you know, schools and jobs and demographics and all sorts of different things. Transportation data, traffic accident data, and all kinds of stuff, some of the same data that's in this map. But they don't have it visually represented in the same way, where it's really, really sort of filterable and interactive. But it, it seems like an opportunity, if we could take some of the data that TRPC has and make it look more like this. I'm sure this was a very heavy lift, and it took a lot of work to make this happen, but it's really impressive.
Yeah, and I think there's absolutely, you know, future conversations that we can have across the region about how we can continue to build off of this momentum.
So I noticed Pierce County indicators under their accessibility, they have voter participation rate. You, you mentioned, you, like, the one-off that you said that was library access.
Yep.
Do we have that in our, as one of our indicators under access?
Yeah, so if you look at accessibility, and, you know, certainly, I think the thing about this is great, is that we can always continue to add more things, as long as there's datasets. But we do have four-year average voter participation rate, and this is again showing for all, in this case, the city of Lacey specifically, because I did refresh it. So you can pull up information on that, and you could go down to your, your map options, and you could pull up that one specifically. So give me just a second here. If you see it before I do. Oh, there it is. And so you could select that, and you could see voter participation across the area, and where there is a higher degree of voters and where there are less. So yeah, you can, every one of these indices, you can get more information on as long as it's there. And as, you know, more data and information becomes available, that's conversations that we could have of continuing to add layers onto the, the map itself.
Interesting. Thank you.
This would be a great presentation to make for the TRPC when it's a little further along. I think they'd love to see that.
Yeah, happy, happy to connect with any of our regional partners and kind of talk about this project, and where we might be able to connect and continue to work on it.
Yeah.
Going the road.
Councilmembers, that's all I had for this evening, and if there's any other questions about the equity map, I'd be happy to answer those questions.
This is very impressive. And what's our, what's our timeframe for going live with this?
We're hoping to launch this in the next couple of months. We have a couple of small edits and details to work out, and then we're hoping to get it live here pretty soon.
Okay. Councilmember Vasquez?
That was my question. When does it get to go live, though? That's exciting. Sounds like it's soon.
So the data, we, we do have room for additional datasets as, as new information becomes available?
Yeah, and I think maybe I'll preface that by saying, the idea with this is that we would refresh this on a two-year cycle at this point in time, you know, pending budget allocations. But that would be the best time to do a major overhaul, is when we have a good, you know, sense of what do we want to add, and then kind of have that recalculation.
And do we have any idea how this will affect, like, what, what is our annual budget for this?
So the map itself, as part of like an annual budget, it's on a, on a two-year cycle, so it'd be probably fifteen, twenty thousand for every time we do a refresh of the map itself.
Very useful tool.
Want to do one more? Because I'm going to, I was going to request a plug for, because you know, the mayor Ryder's always talking about, you know, citywide Wi-Fi, right? Big supporter of that. You know, could you, do we have the access to Wi-Fi, internet access?
Not on Wi-Fi specifically, but on broadband. There is information on this, and it's other, it's either under accessibility or livability. And so you can see access to broadband. Let me just see if I can find it really quickly here. Home, home internet access right here.
Yeah.
But what I will say about that is, you know, this is based, and let's click on this one as an example here really quickly. So this is based on information that we're getting from the census, and it's based on kind of what FCC rates of upload and download are. And they are, the, the standard is very low, right? So when we're talking high-speed internet, it may not be reflective of the fastest internet to, you know, get information at this point.
I knew he's not here, so I wanted to point that out, because I thought we'd see the different shades of who had better.
Yep. And I was saying, and you could turn, you could turn that on specifically in that filter of like looking at, you know, distribution of access to internet.
Thank you.
Well, I want to also thank Shannon for all her work on this, and, and also Community Attributes, because this is going to be a very informative tool, and it's going to create an opportunity to kind of learn more about our community in different ways, and it's just a, a place of access of research and information. And it's going to be a guidance, too. There's going to be input, not that the sort of side of input on future policy decisions and infrastructure projects. One thing I do want to caveat, though, is while this has a lot of information there, there's a lot of information that's beyond like city control, you know, like Wi-Fi access and broadband. You know, we can talk about those issues, but also those are provided by other entities. So trying to use this as a tool, but not as a, this is something that the city can have direct control or not, it's just showing where we are as a community and all the services that provide. So I just want to make that, there are some things that we can control. You know, you know, we have a real strong road preservation maintenance program that I think is very well documented, and other things. But I just want to put that, access to parks is another thing, you know, how we look at, cite parks, and how, and so there are some things that we can do that are directly related, but also just good information about our community. So thank you, Shannon, for putting this all together. It's been a good project.
One last question. So, so how do we, how do we, how are we planning on informing the public about this new tool? And is this something that's going to be pushed out? How's that going to work?
Yeah, we'll work with the communications team on making sure that we do kind of the full-court press of, you know, putting out our press releases, getting it out on social media, and also sending it out to a lot of our, you know, human service groups that we've been working with. Again, because this could be a tool that not only the city uses, but to, you know, Rick's point, you know, other nonprofits, other businesses may want to use it to help inform some of their own decisions. And that, just to add on to what Rick was saying, I think that goes back to, you know, the Diversity, Equity, Inclusion, Belonging Strategic Plan, where it identifies things where the city's going to be a leader. The city's going to be sometimes a partner, and sometimes it's going to be an advocate, right? So helping get that information out there to the community.
Wow. That is really cool that you do this stuff in your spare time. It's awesome.
I hope libraries will be part of the stakeholders groups on those, because I think they would find it really useful to have.
Yep, absolutely. That's a really good point. And when we actually introduced this to the Commission on Equity, the library manager was there, and so we did have a discussion afterwards about that. So yeah, we'll, we'll certainly make sure that the library also knows this tool is available and get feedback.
She pretty excited, then?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought so.
I remember mentioning, another thing, too, is that also that nuance, too, is you may have two neighborhoods that have little different scores and are right next to each other, but there's some, some data or information that is, you know, just skewed one way or the other. And so that's one thing, is, is some people may look at it as a rating system for neighborhoods, and it's not that type of tool. It's just showing a broad brush, here's where everybody's at in their particular location, and what they have access to, and overall quality of life.
I like the fact that it produced information that was a little more granulated in that, you know, we, we oftentimes think of this community as somewhere it's, you know, 450 to half a million dollars to, to get in, right, to, to buy a home and so on. But it showed that there are some areas that are still in the 300s when you highlighted that circle. So, so information like that, as it becomes more granulated, it becomes more valuable, in my opinion. So thank you.
Absolutely. Well, thank you, council. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Okay, so we are going to, we, just before we end our agenda, I just wanted to preface this next section, which is the Olympia-Lacey-Thurston County Fan Zone. It's a conversation that we had at our three cities meeting. There, there will be an ask in the future, but tonight is just information. And so there's, not even a recommendation is being looked for at this point. I just wanted to make sure that it got in front of council prior to a time where we might be considering, you know, a recommendation, and then a decision. But I, I couldn't let this, this meeting go without you guys seeing and hearing what is coming your way. So I'll hand it over to Rick.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. The, yeah, we wanted to make sure that the council was aware of what's coming up. We're looking at scheduling this discussion on the July 8th work session, and it's related to the FIFA Fan Zone. I think everybody's kind of heard that, that topic being discussed for quite some time, and now it's starting to get into focus. And part of that focus is the Thurston Chamber is looking at, is offering up to be able to take the lead in organizing the event planning. And so what this really looks like, or starting to look like, is the fan, the fan zones are to set up events that coincide with next summer's World Cup matches. We have, of course, a couple of matches up in the Seattle area. And so those dates are, there are six matches between June 15th and July 6th. And so the expectation is that the fan zones, we set up with our festivals for each day of those six events during that, those two weeks. Part of that event is to have large-screen TVs, music, food vendors, cultural showcase and community programming, and family-friendly entertainment, and be a place where people can come and participate in the World Cup without actually being in the actual stadiums. There, there are some thoughts that it might drive people into the community that are, you know, other points of origin, so either out of state or out of country. And when the World Cup Committee in Seattle started looking at their planning for the Seattle events, they identified these various fan zones across the straight state. And one of the reasons they identified Thurston County as a potential is because it's proximity in between Portland and Seattle. So again, this is something that could drive some, you know, potential hotel stays and, and other events. But we wanted to put this in front of the council to have your, a little bit more awareness going into that work session in July 8th, because there is going to be an ask, because putting on an event like this is going to take quite a few dollars, and there isn't really enough time to start fundraising with private sponsors yet, so they're going to need, they're asking for... they're going to need, they're asking for dollars in advance, or as soon as possible to start that event planning. So, let's see. So, in this packet I'm handing out, this is what we'll go over on the July 8th, includes kind of the overview I just went through on the fan zones, some of the logistics and in-kind support requests, and then a preliminary budget. So, one of the things that the council's going to be asked to do is weigh in on, you know, how do we participate? And ultimately, between the four jurisdictions, Thurston County, Olympia, Tomater, and Lacey, is there some financial commitments that everybody's willing to make and ultimately creating potentially an ILA if, if there is a decision to move forward, entering an ILA with the four jurisdictions, and be able to provide some funding for this work by the Thurston Chamber. I'll stop right there. If there's some more detail that I can provide, I'll stop right there to see if there's any quick questions. Otherwise, we'll plan on having this full conversation in July 8th.
Can you put that packet in my mailbox?
Yep. For those councilmembers that aren't in person today, we'll email out the packet.
Joe, go ahead, Mike. Just seeing it for the first time, I mean, can't see not supporting it in some way. I mean, I was, you know, part of the World Cup down in the Bay Area when I was young, 20-something. I did some color guards and, you know, ceremonies of some of the games leading up to, is, it's a great, great thing, great for tourism, great for the hoteliers, great for the economy, all that. I can't see not being a part of this.
One of the challenges is how we're a part of it, because, you know, with this financial act, there's not, as we know, we're going into our budget circumstances. We do have some budget challenges going into the next year, so we don't have general fund capacity. So, again, it's trying to figure out how we participate, and is that participation effective? And then, what's the return on that, those investments as well to, to the Lacey community? Those are the things we're going to have to weigh out, and the council's going to have to weigh out in making that decision.
Yeah. And you guys will see in these pages, you know, just kind of outlining our in-kind, outlining the event space, what's going to be required. And the last page is, is just kind of a budget that we were presented with last Friday. And so, as opposed to this being fresh, new to you on July 8th, I just thought you guys need to see it now, so that by the time July 8th rolls around, you're not, you know, feeling any pressure.
And all the other jurisdictions are going to have, be having these conversations in July. And so, between now and our next work session, feel free to contact me if you have any questions or, you know, looking for additional information.
So, how hard is that number, the 375,000 number?
How far?
How hard?
How hard?
Oh, hard for us to come up with?
No, I mean...
Oh, how hard? Oh, I'm sorry.
How firm a number is that?
Yes. This is a preliminary budget, so it could decrease a little bit, it can increase. Also, part of that budget, they anticipated some revenues, and they identified an amount for sponsorship. And if that sponsorship number increases, then, of course, the proportion, share of all the partners would go down. But I would say that from their experiencing and putting on events such as the Governor's Ball and those type of things, they're kind of, you know, while it's a preliminary budget, it's probably a good ballpark.
Yeah. It's not like...
And it goes by with, with the FIFA Fan Fest, they give a playbook, and there's some things that they, that you'd have to do with the program, and there are things that are not to do. But there are some must-haves, and, of course, it's the logistics of public safety, transportation, parking, equipment rental, stage, canopies, all these different, you have to plan for weather events as well. And then, this location would have to be, you can't just set up and tear down. It'll be set up for durations, only activated on those dates of the events, but you're taking on a piece of property that's going to be set aside for two weeks for that.
It's a good problem to have, because we could have not been selected at all. So, it's going to bring people to town. So, in Built-in is a smaller contingency. It's not like the 30% that we saw for the RAC Phase III. And so, we want to make sure that this guy's, this got in front of you guys, but if you, do you have further questions, reach out to Rick, and it's, because, as he's kind of back-channeling this with some of the other jurisdictions and the other city managers. So, he'll be able to answer any questions you have. This is just preliminary, just FYI, but we will have a deep discussion about this on our July 8th work session. So, with that, we have reached the end of our agenda, and if there is nothing further, I will call this work session adjourned, and as usual, you keep it classy, Lacey.